This conference will now be recorded.
They gave me a new hammer today, so we'll. Okay. Welcome to the December meeting of South Whitehall Planning Commission. This meeting is recorded, being recorded now, and we'll start off, Greg, could you do a roll call?
Yes, Diane Kelly.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Phil McNair.
Here.
Alan Tope. David Wilson. Mark Luth.
We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, which is true under God, is holy, and is just as strong.
Okay. We have, the second item will be the approval of minutes, the minutes for the November eighteenth meeting were distributed previously. Does anyone have any changes or additions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Second. Diane and Brian.
We have a roll call vote. Dan Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Phil McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope. David Wilson. And Mark Luth. Motion passes four to zero with two abstentions.
Item three is the comprehensive plan, by the way, just in case anybody's interested in the third proposed commercial development at eighteen ten PA Route three oh nine, that case has been delayed, they will be hearing that in next month in January. If you're here for that, you won't be hearing anything about it. Okay, item three is the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, basically, I'll make it quick. The first workshop for the planning commission, a joint planning commission board of commissioners comprehensive plan meeting will be on Tuesday, January eleventh. I believe that's at six PM in this very room. And big crowd. I will speak more to this at the end of the meeting, so if you're terribly interested in that, please stick around, and I will tell you more about what we have planned for that meeting.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to agenda item number four, which is subdivision review, and we will start off with the Duneville Shopping Center fast casual restaurant major plan twenty twenty one dash one oh seven, and these will consist of four parts. Day presentation, the applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and a planning commission decision. But Greg, we'll start off with the day presentation, please.
Yes, this is an application to further develop the properties located at thirty three twenty seven Hamilton Boulevard. The plan proposes a twenty four hundred square foot fast casual restaurant pad in the southeast corner of the existing shopping center parking lot. An eight point four five oh eight acre property is served by public water and sewer and is zoned highway commercial HC. Tree Mata forty three sixty five LLC is the owner and applicant. The community development department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The soft planning commission deadline to act on the plan is June, January seventeenth, twenty twenty two. The board of commissioners hard deadline to act on the plan is February sixteenth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Greg. Applicant, your turn, and we do need you to talk at the microphone for people that are here.
Absolutely, how's this, is this good?
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Pestersky with Keystone Consulting Engineers. Greg did a great job taking care of the introduction to the project, so that cuts out half of my presentation. But I'm here with Mr. Hares Joshi, sorry, Hares Joshi, he was the applicant and the shopping center owner. And as Greg had mentioned, this is, as you can see on the plans on the monitors, a much larger existing shopping center located just south of Haynes Mill Road and in between where the, where the two twenty two bypass starts to converge together by Dorney Park. And the gray shaded area to the lower right corner of the site is our proposed development, the twenty four hundred square foot fast casual restaurant. And the light gray shaded area is the, you know, approximate limit of disturbance, if you will, with pavement modifications and things like that. You know, we feel this, this, it's, the project itself is located exclusively within the existing parking field for the existing shopping center. There's no new impervious surfaces, there's actually a negative stormwater impact. There's a roughly a decrease of approximately eighteen hundred square feet of impervious surfaces. You know, we feel it would be an attractive front improvement to the frontage of Hamilton Boulevard into the shopping center. Low impact, takes advantage of some underutilized parking and creates a, you know, a service that would be useful to the, to the community. So just the purpose of us being here, I realize this is our first time in front of you. And we're not asking for a recommendation at this time, we understand there's some things to work through. We really just want to have an opportunity to present a couple items about the plan and get your thoughts on a couple key issues, which I'll point out in just a moment. So without any further delay, I'm just gonna go through and go a little deeper, describe the plan, and then I'll get to the main things that we would like feedback on, in addition to any general comments that you would have. So with respect to the site itself, just to describe what's going on there, the site is served by existing accesses on Hamilton Boulevard. Between the yellow and the red there, there's the main entrance to, it's a left in and a left out proposed driveway. There's also a driveway onto Haynes Mill Road, as well as a third driveway to the shopping center at the upper left corner of the screen, which is a larger, a larger driveway, so there's, there's access in those locations. The circulation of the site itself, we have twelve, I'm sorry, eleven parking spaces in front of the, in the frontage between the building and Hamilton Boulevard. There is a pickup window, it's not a traditional drive through like you would think of a typical fast food Wendy's or McDonald's where you have an order place and a place to pick up your food. It's for call in and things like that, and the pickup window is located, I wish I could have that alarm, I could just point, but to the upper with a dark shaded area is something, yeah, right there, thank you, whoever did that. That's the pickup window, and we provide stacking in the, in the lane that wraps around the building. And as you can see, closest to, furthest down and to the right, there's a lane of escape. If someone doesn't want to go to the pickup, they can still exit and, you know, enter into the general circulation of the parking lot. The other, let's see, the, we, we did consider emergency services in the design, we believe there's adequate access on all four sides. I don't believe emergency service personnel had any significant comments in our, in our review. With respect, if someone doesn't mind zooming out on this plan a bit and looking at the whole site as a whole. And we had met with, excuse me, with staff a couple times before our submission and trying to work out some, some items and get some feedback. One thing that we realized upon our review is that we have several zoning comments to address. A lot of those, I won't go into the detail of those, but a lot of those comments, we believe we can simply comply with and will modify, we can modify the plan accordingly. The most substantial things that we're not sure that we're going to be able to comply with, and we might need zoning relief, is going to be the number of parking spaces. There was private zoning relief to reduce parking, in which we would obviously be cutting into that parking plus creating additional demand. So we'd need zoning relief for parking, also some parking setbacks, again, anything, nothing that's above and beyond what is currently there, but there's some zoning that we have to work through. With regards to traffic, and I, again, I characterize this as a low impact redevelopment. There, there is, we have some traffic calculations that indicated a very low traffic generation, now that the engineer did have some comments on that, which we're going to address, that I'm sure will bump the traffic up a little bit, but we don't anticipate, since a lot of the traffic is coming from traffic already on the roadway, we don't anticipate a lot of new traffic. Obviously, there will be some, and we will have to go to PennDOT to see how they want us to treat the driveways, how to classify if it, we need to do any improvements or if they're adequate as they currently exist. Water and sewer services are going to be accessed. If I could ask someone to zoom in further on the plan to the, just the developed area. Water and sewer is available in Haynes Mill Road, so part of our engineering review and public works review is, I'm sorry, other way, yeah. There we go. Is going to be establishing new water and sewer services, and we'll, since Haynes Mill Road is a state highway, we will need utility highway occupancy permits for that. And, you know, electric and gas and other, other services we've given some thought to. So that's just a, thanks for bearing with that, that was just a brief, a little bit of a deeper dive on the project and what we're proposing. What we really wanted to, and first of all, before I ask you my specific questions, is there any general comments that you may have that I could answer to help orient you to the project?
One thing I noticed, the arrows, the circulation now are on the, if you could blow that up just a little bit on the lower right of the building, are they both going the same direction now?
That's, that's correct.
So that's different than what, what we had that, okay.
Okay, yes, it's, on where the parking is, that's two-way traffic, but around the side of the building, that's intended to be one-way.
Right there on the lower right?
Correct, right there.
Making it a one-way around the building.
Correct, yes. Right. The whole way. I don't, yeah, we could certainly consider that, I think the, the motivation for having it two-way, if somebody wanted to leave and wanted to access Hamilton Boulevard, they wouldn't have to drive around the building, but I don't, we could certainly look at that and possibly.
Entering and exiting on Hamilton, plus someone exiting from the restaurant and then anywhere in that parking lot funneling down to that corner.
Okay.
Go to create a bottleneck and if you can keep one less movement.
Keep it away from there, I understand. Okay, I've got that jotted down, absolutely, we'll take a look at that.
Especially because it's a left in, left out, which is unique. Other question is, the primary, is it a sit-down restaurant or, I understand the takeout apps and all that stuff, so is the primary use going to be like a sit-down restaurant or takeout or? Not sure yet.
Is it okay to? It'll be both. Yeah, I don't, yeah, just the breakdown, I don't, I don't know that, but it'll, it'll have, it'll be sit-down as well.
The world's still changing as far as takeout restaurants and stuff, so.
Right.
I didn't know if you had like limited seats inside, you know, just a couple, and then mainly takeout or fast takeout counter service, that's what I'm more.
Right, it is both, I don't know the breakdown, but it will, it will have both. Any other general questions?
I don't mind noticing what the building's placed on top of storm plate. Either rerouting that storm plate.
I, ten-four, I understand. That's, that's never our first option. The, basically, we were looking at that as a maintenance item, I know the engineer does not recommend that. Mr. Joshi is the owner of the shopping center, has indicated he would take over any maintenance responsibilities of that private storm store.
I would recommend looking into that because it's a safety concern, and we don't want to collapse pipe and that leading to potential sinkholes and other structural issues.
Bottom line is you'll be opening. To do the retrofit, just to throw a jog in the line and I understand it's an additional probably in the future.
Right, I hear you loud and clear.
And, you know, I appreciate that he was willing to take on the private maintenance of it, but if there's a situation of a blockage, it's going to be our emergency services on site, and how do you deal with something under a floor? It's not a good situation for anybody involved, from ownership to emergency services. Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned gas, is gas on the site?
There is a gas line, if you, right where the cross hatching is, right next to the, adjacent to the facility, between the new facility and the existing building, there's like that gore hatched area. Gas is, UGI gas is right, goes right down there, so we would have to, you know, seek permission. We're still trying to identify the easements in there if we need to get easements, but I would imagine we're going to be tapping in right there. Okay. And electric, since we're on utilities, right out in front, there's a PPL pole, the anticipation is they would run across, go down a guy pole and then run to underground service into the building, but that's detailed on our, on our plans.
When do you anticipate submitting to PennDOT?
Well, we have to reach out to them as soon as possible.
Spoken meeting and all.
Yeah, well, we, we're going to notify them with our trip generator, we'll make the revisions as requested by the engineer and send them our, you know, basically, I don't know that, if it's going to necessarily be an HOP, normally the scoping process is what needs to be followed. We'll reach out to them, if they tell us to go to scoping, we'll go to scoping, but we'll reach out to Brett Klingel, Ryan Boyer, and basically, it's what do they want? You know, that's, that's where biting our nails, waiting to see what they may or may not require. Obviously, we have to go to them and, and ask. We understand that.
Could you go over the sidewalk phasing and what your initial intent is?
Yeah, and that was really the main reason, the main item of feedback that, that we had specifically in addition to these other things. If you don't mind zooming out to show the whole site. Okay, so I think Greg had mentioned about an eight and a half acre property, and you can see, hopefully you can see the outline of the property, the little building in the corner there next to the cursor is not, is not part of the shopping center, that's a, I think it's a dentist's office, I'm not sure to be honest with you. So it's, it's a large property, and with this proposal, we are proposing certainly sidewalk in front of the facility in yellow. Tried to color code this, hopefully that came out relatively clear. And so what we're proposing is a phased approach, and really, the, the request or the consideration that I'd like you to consider and give me feedback on, or give us, you know, give Mr. Joshi feedback on, is the commensurate requirement for sidewalk, given a large property, and we're developing this small corner of a twenty four hundred square foot building. What we'd like to do is build the sidewalk in our, along that development frontage, and then identify phases around the perimeter upon any further development of the property, or really, and we want to hear what, what trigger points would you be acceptable with? You know, but what I've proposed as a starting point would be any further development or redevelopment of the shopping center that, just like we're doing with the fast casual restaurant, any further development, the frontage of those developments between driveways or from driveways to property lines would be outfitted with sidewalk at that time, and go through design approvals, you know, permitting and construction, obviously. That's a proposal, but we realize you probably have some comments on that, so that's what I got my pen clicked on and ready to write. Give what you have to say.
I know a lot of people walk up and down Hamilton, Dorney Park there. Think it would be important to get all of that Hamilton Street sidewalk in now. The bypass, I know that their sidewalk at the Wawa nearby, and that would be important. I don't want to speak for anyone else, but, you know, there's a, I know it's a lot of cost to install that sidewalk, but it is needed. On the bypass, you know, if it gets deferred, maybe a short time span in order to lessen the cost impact. Hear that, but I think Hamilton Street is, is very important right now.
And what about this sidewalk on either side of the development, there's the Dunkin' Donuts and ice cream or whatever to the, to the lower right-hand corner and the dentist's office. And I understand the township's thinking about deferrals, so I saw that loud and clear in the, in the letter, but if we built that sidewalk, what, what are your thoughts on the timing of that? You know, because obviously, we're looking at a relatively small amount of work, and we're looking at quite a bit of sidewalk here potentially, and there's a vibe, there's a viability question here of when does it just not become feasible, and that's not my question, that's Mr. Joshi's metric, if you will, or, you know, his decision to make, but hoping we can reach some kind of a balancing point. And what would trigger, I mean, if the sidewalk isn't on either side, would we phase it somehow or set the timing of that such that that the timing is coincident with other work, or, I mean, you know what I'm saying, if it's going to be a sidewalk, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer, I'm just asking.
I don't know if anyone, I, I would say at least that the yellow and the red would be immediate, and then the green, not, not far after. Think this is something we all need to think about a little.
Right.
I would agree with Dorney Park as a neighbor, there's an awful lot of pedestrian traffic, and certainly if we're putting in an eating establishment, I envision people coming from the park, and we want to have safe passage for them to, to go to your establishment. So I would agree that certainly along the frontage on Hamilton Boulevard should be done as part of this development.
You also said, you know, you were willing to phase it with other development. What kind of development can you envision in the future that you're not going to run into future zoning issues?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and I.
Is a future development a change of use of one of your tenants? It's, you know, I, I don't see a lot of ability to put future buildings like this on site where it would trigger something in the future. So that's.
I, I figured that was the weakest part of the whole argument, so you caught on.
Well, you know, I'm trying to figure what the triggers would be.
Right.
And if you're already have a host of zoning issues for just this little piece of it, future development is seems like a high hurdle that's not going to trigger
Right.
pedestrian connectivity, so.
That was a starting point, but obviously, we're going to have to establish other triggers
Yeah.
for that.
That's my main concern of any kind of phasing that's triggered on development, so, thank you.
Well, I'm hearing Hamilton Boulevard frontage, the red, and you were indicating basically all of it, I believe.
Is, is that all that the red and the green on Hamilton?
That's all on Hamilton, yes.
Okay, and then the other part is on the bypass?
Yeah, on the, on the east, or I guess the westbound leg, the one way on the top of the plan, and also along Haynes Mill. Is actually kind of more the north of the plan, but it's actually, I consider that east where the orange is. I mean, certainly that, those two chunks, and I can't even speak for the Hamilton Boulevard, I have to talk with my client a little bit about that, but the purple and the orange would be really, really hard to work. You're saying the orange would be hard to make work? Hard to make work in the sense that it's a lot of sidewalk, if trying to gauge the priorities, where are the pedestrians, and again, back to the, the scale, the commensurate scale of the development versus the sidewalk requirements, it's.
Here's my thoughts of that section on Haynes Mill. We already had sidewalk from the new Wawa to that road. You also have a college. College kids tend to walk to the Wawa, I see them there all, this could be a destination for them pedestrian-wise. So that's even more so, in my opinion, than the westbound Hamilton northern tier would be that to get pedestrians off the road. Or some sort of connectivity to, it's not a destination for, I'm not going to leave my house to go there, no offense, but for a college kid at Cedar Crest College, I could see this being a nice walk. You know, they go to the chicken lounge now, and they, so this could be another location, especially if it's open later at night. Pedestrian safety at night is critical to get them off their, their cartway of the road. Thanks.
Okay.
So then would you be more inclined to limit to the yellow on Hamilton and get the majority of the bypass?
At, at least along from, along Haynes Mill South, maybe not the bypass, because the, the current sidewalk terminates at Haynes Mill. So if they're walking from, if they're walking from Cedar Crest, then they can come down. I, I agree, you know, sidewalk to where dentist is is maybe a long, longer vision, but like Mr. Wilson says, I'm only one of seven up here, so.
But are, are you saying then the, the vertical?
Yeah.
Is that orange, yellow, or, okay, on the right side?
Yeah.
And then go and there's, you can raise it up a little bit just to see what zoom out a little bit.
So you're just, yeah, a little bit of yellow in front of the store plus.
Okay, so there's a yellow along the building?
Right, yeah.
And then the orange to the left and the green?
Yeah, it's like a pinkish-red, and then green along Hamilton and orange along Haynes Mill.
I'm not so much worried about the purple and the northern tier, I'm more worried about those.
And if.
But it's going to make his project more successful, safer, last thing you want is a newspaper article about a pedestrian. We've already had pedestrian deaths along the corridor for various reasons. Thanks.
Is there a priority of one over the other, would you think of Haynes Mill Road versus Hamilton? I know you had mentioned Hamilton as being your concern, and you was mentioning more Haynes Mill. How do we, again, try to balance this out and still make this project that can be done? Is there any way to prioritize which? Which one of those?
By thirteen and a third percent up here would be Haynes Mill and the immediate frontage of, of your project, and then maybe we could talk about triggers in the future. Or unless, I mean, preferably, I would like to see everything, but I'm a realist too. If I had my carte blanche of eliminating one section, I would eliminate the purple section at the top for now.
That's the least desirable, right, from hearing.
But my concern is pedestrians from Cedar Crest College and, and Dorney Park and the neighborhood as a whole.
Any other?
Any other comments on priorities?
I'd agree with the Haynes Mill.
Yeah, Haynes Mill at least connects to an existing sidewalk that's already been constructed by the neighboring.
Higher northern boundary of the King. Higher northern boundary of the Kings. Was that sidewalks so they could. Get to Haynes Mill and get into this particular project.
We'll take all that under consideration and.
And, and to be fair to the township and the community sidewalks were deferred in the past on this parse, you know, projects or just. Par, parcel, so. Eventually things come home to roost, for lack of a better term, so.
Well, and to that end, the deferral was 22 years ago, so that's certainly a consideration.
Understood. All right. Thank you for the feedback. We asked, the only other thing I wanted to mention, we did have a few waivers. Um, that we would, again, not pressing for any kind of decision tonight, but just wanted to review them quickly. I believe they're minor. And if, if you did want to, if you do agree they're minor and you would like to recommend them, that's fine. But if, again, I'm not, I don't think we. You'd rather do it all in one shot, that's fine as well. I did have the revised waiver letter. Did that, do you know Greg, if that was distributed? Have copies if not. With your permission, I'll.
I believe that came at what, like four, four thirty this afternoon?
But close enough, yeah, it was late. Just to give you a brief summary, the, we had previously submitted for deferrals for sidewalk. I've removed those deferrals and we're having this discussion in lieu of. The deferral discussion. So the waivers that are left, I believe are minor plan items. If like I can just go through them quickly.
Okay.
Um, the first one is a, and the, and these are typical waivers that we often ask for, a requirement to show existing contours within four feet of the tract. You know, we, we believe that uh. Is, we have a relatively small project area, so I believe we had engineering recommendation on, on that. I don't want to speak for Tony, but I believe that's what the letter had said. On the second waivers, requirement to show existing features. Water, sewer mans, et cetera. And we, we show what's relevant for the project area. Again, it's not. We just, a, a smaller scope we thought was reasonable and I believe we had recommendation from the engineer on that. The third waiver is requirement to show existing features within a hundred feet of the tract. So any, any buildings relevant to the project area shown on the plan. Lastly, a requirement to show existing features within four hundred feet of the tract. Sidewalks, trails, drivers, et cetera. Um, and our plan previously had shown topography in the project area, but. Reasonably so, it was noted that the, some of the plans, the contours kind of stopped in the middle of the parking lot and it really should be filled in, so. We agree to do that, but for this strict interpretation of the comment within four hundred feet, we would request a waiver to that, but we will partially comply to the engineer's. Uh, comment.
Yeah, I think I would just note that um. For the extent of the plan that's shown currently, if we start, if sidewalk is proposed, I would suggest. Showing some of the existing sidewalk for any type of crosswalks or coordination with other developments. So as you start to. Move outward with your sidewalk, I would just suggest showing stopping points, starting points, crosswalks or anything necessary to the surrounding developments. So it might not be within four hundred feet, but those are definitely features that we look for, noting that now you're outside your envelope, if you will.
So noted.
So you're saying add the existing sidewalk?
Definitely. I mean, um, you don't, I would say you wouldn't have to go the whole way to the Wawa, but definitely if there's. Sidewalk on the, the corner that you're tying into, you would definitely need a crosswalk. It would be nice to see. What that sidewalk rate is, just so that we can confirm sidewalks, crosswalks, everything makes sense.
Got it.
Okay. Any other?
No, that was it.
I've got just one point I'm going to suggest. Looking at the township engineer review letter, he notes that your survey note eight indicates the plan is prepared without the benefit of title report. My recommendation, since Mr. Joshi bought the property, he should have his title policy from the time of purchase. That will indicate the majority, if not all, the existing easements, just a matter then from time of purchase now, just doing a quick bring down.
Okay. Any other? Comments on that?
That's all I had.
Okay. Do we have any, courtesy of the floor, any comments? Have that on. Oh, wait, Mr. Joshi. Okay. If you could move up to the.
Uh, I don't understand. Are you putting sidewalk only in front of the proposed development or entire property?
Could you ask the question one more time?
Are we proposing sidewalk along the proposed development on, on the entire properties?
I think we're willing to compromise. Uh, I don't think any, I don't think we're expecting you to install sidewalk around the entire. Think that we could probably come to a compromise to. Connectivity of sidewalk maybe, so that we have some connectivity to your project and maybe in front of the store. I, I think it's certainly up for discussion, but I don't think at this point we're saying we expect you to do all three sides.
My, my point, we have people that walk, walk from like Dunkin Donut, there's no sidewalk there. There's no sidewalk further along the Hamilton Boulevard and actually we don't want people to walk on Hamilton Boulevard. It's very dangerous. I mean, they are. About forty years there. I was, I used to know Howard Johnson Hotel, I went to Four Points Hotel. People get killed. We don't want, we don't expect people to walk on the sidewalk along the Hamilton Boulevard.
That's why we want sidewalks.
Yeah, if there's sidewalk.
It's a transit route.
Yeah.
Atlanta is dropping people off on that road.
Right.
And they're walking on the grass and trying to get to. A pavement other than the road, so that's why.
Yeah, but if, if there's continuation of the highway, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Continous highway, other side and like north side and south side, both side, you know, continuation along the, uh, Dorney Park, you know. I believe that, but people walk here, we, some people walk, then there's the sidewalk further, bypass meter, there's a danger spot for flying there. I think my proposal as being a holder could, twenty four hundred square feet, tell a baby, you know, justify all this expense to me, you know. Like a hundred, ten thousand square feet all there, you know. And whatever I inherited from previous owners. You are maintaining that very well. But my, my proposal would be I would install high, I mean, sidewalk in corporate orbit, then we develop further, there's certainly continued, like a. Headline there, if you don't have any small, anything down there, we'll continue to side. So there's a, the bypass here too, but it doesn't make sense for me, economically, doesn't, doesn't pay me to develop this twenty four hundred square feet.
Yeah, it might not make economical sense that a twenty four hundred square foot store, but.
I go adopt the whole, whole plan, you know.
Yeah.
I have no, I mean, I, 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 I agree to comply, you know, according to requirement, but economically it is not feasible for me. I mean, I don't mind to put down sidewalk on that face, but it's fine. If I develop certain area and I will continuously put a sidewalk there. There's the sidewalk and Dunkin Donut area.
But we, we, we did make the Kings developers put sidewalk along Hamilton Boulevard, so, but what happens then is there's nowhere to go on to your property.
Yeah.
So our suggestion was that maybe we continue sidewalk down Haynes Mill, and we can enter your property.
As we develop, we will. Our, our Johnson Hotel and all of the development on south side, none of the, all the areas are high.
Well, we can't make everybody do it.
I believe there's still some moving parts with the project, especially with PennDOT, so we, we might not be ready.
Yeah.
To make a definitive. Statement on the sidewalk as of now, but I, I think. What we're, the conclusion we're initially coming to is Hamilton Street and Haynes Mill. Initially is, is very important and.
Yeah.
Um, the, the purple. On the two twenty two bypass, we may be willing to defer that within a reasonable amount of time. I'm just one person, but that, that's sort of what I'm, I'm getting from what we've been discussing.
And we also have to look at the Dunkin Donuts, whether that was deferred. This might be a catalyst for us to pull in that deferral and have them install, so. I mean, I know we had that locked, Greg.
And this mall development will not, economically it's impossible to justify this all this improvement. We have measured scrap board plan. I mean, I'm believing the word by thousand, build all other equipment. This will beautify area. Now, look at the mall, hold my view up. By the way, we are upgrading the whole mall. I mean, only moving back. I should also that, and we are upgrading the entire mall. It's giving new looks. But they are beautifying the area, especially with, during the Kudova restaurant, it will be really beautified with all landscaping, we'll be doing that. But sidewalk will be without of.
Fortunately, the only time we can ask for it is when you come in and ask.
I, I, no, we need to, I, I believe to sidewalk in front of the, my property, up to that driveway, but going further, if I develop further, certainly I'll do. I stand, you know, to you guys, element to decide.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other comments?
There's one question in the chat and that's from Dave Manhart and he asks. Could they please review the internal pedestrian circulation?
Review the internal pedestrian.
Circulation. Like from inside.
Chicken Lounge Pizza Hut to this location and all that. Okay, um, this is developed or this is proposed as an out parcel. It was, I do, I do remember recall seeing, one of the zoning comments was to provide some connectivity between. The new pad and the existing and we would certainly have to take a look at that. What would make sense? I know upstate parking is at a premium. We'd have to look at how much would we really anticipate? Interaction between the two developments. I know. When, from a traffic standpoint, interaction occurs where sometimes you have a shared trip. Uh, you drive one place and you kill two birds with one stone to put, lack of putting it in a better way. Um, looking at the uses, you know, would have to look at how much interaction would anticipate there. So I would have to do a little more research to really, it's, it's a good question, but I, I think we have to do a little more research to really speak intelligently on that. But to see how much we really expect, and if we do expect a significant amount, where would that come from? Is it acceptable? If it's a very, very small amount, would it be acceptable for them just to walk back and forth in the aisles? If there's a big draw between the two, we might need a separate walkway just for that interaction. In a way that people would actually use it, because people aren't going to go do a stair step, they're going to go straight line no matter what we put there. So good question. I don't have great answers yet, but something we can also take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, I think of the Peter Crest Shopping Center with the Applebee's there. It's not exactly like. Walk to and. Be nice to have everything, but it's a parking lot. One way or the other, you're going to, someone's going to be riding a car next to you or around you. Waiting for that car to go.
Every time you go to Walmart, you get out of your car and you're, you're walking where the cars go. It's a shared space. But worthy of consideration, certainly do that.
Okay, anything else?
There are no further questions in the chat.
Okay, and no more here. Okay. Plan decision, commission decision, mo, motion to. Take under advisement, I think.
First. Wait, wait.
Uh, as far as your waiver letter, I think it's a little premature in the process, depending what happens in zoning and revisions and. Conversations with your client. Not that we ignore them. It's usually, you know, we like to do everything at once.
Understand. That's fair.
But you have, you.
We got, we got your feedback, which is what we wanted, right?
Okay, but we want to hold off on that till we see the whole.
Right.
Thing, but it, you know.
Understood.
Got our feedback as we understand the project now.
Okay.
Anything else? Wait, Greg?
Uh, would you sign the waiver from the timeframe in which to review the plan?
Yeah, we can, we can, is it right there?
It's right there.
All right. Your agent?
Thank you very much for your time. There are motions to take under advisement?
Second.
Okay. Alan, Diane.
Roll call vote, Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Brian Height?
Aye.
Bill McNair?
Aye.
Alan Tope?
Aye.
David Wilson?
Aye.
Mark Luth?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our. Next is Long's Water Technology. And major plan twenty twenty one dash one oh six, request for preliminary final plan review. Greg, I'm going to read the. Day of presentation.
Yes. This is an application to further develop the property located at fifteen sixty seven Housman Road. The plan proposes the raising of all existing structures on the lot and the construction of a fifty six hundred square foot commercial building. A fourteen space parking lot and associated stormwater management facilities on the one point two eight three three acre lot. The subject property is served by public water and sewer and is zoned highway commercial. Carolyn Warwick, Inc. is the owner and Long's Water Technology is the applicant. I'll go right to the recommendation. The department recommends that the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the board of commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor, that the sufficient. Security in a form acceptable to township be posted, such security shall be available for draws presentation no further than sixty miles from township office. And evidence of necessary insurance coverage shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction township engineer, the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his review letter dated. December tenth, twenty twenty one. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction township water and sewer engineer, the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart as contained in his review dated November fifth, twenty twenty one. Four, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review dated December third of twenty twenty one. Five, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction community development department, the comments of Mr. Greg Adams is contained in his review dated December tenth, twenty twenty one. Six, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of public works department, the comments of Mr. Herb Bender is contained in his review dated December eighth, twenty twenty one. Seven, that the applicant obtains a letter from LCCD approving the soil erosion and sedimentation control plan pursuant to section three twelve thirty nine E of SALDO. Eight, if determined to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a letter from PADEP and or LCCD approving the NPDES permit pursuant to section three twelve thirty nine E of SALDO. Nine, that the applicant obtains a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facilities, oh boy, sewage facilities planning module. Ten, that the applicant contribute fees in lieu of parkland dedication in the amount of three thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. In order to meet the parkland and open space requirements of SALDO. Eleven, that the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Twelve, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the Southside All Township Board of Commissioners. Insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. Thirteen. Thirteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right of way along the front edge of Hausman Road at a width acceptable to the township. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor and an opinion of record title prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of, or the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership and recites deed book and volume and page reference. Fourteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township utilities man of sufficient size in an area acceptable to township for accessing the water meter pit. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. It shall be by deed of easement in a form acceptable to township solicitor and an opinion of record title prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that the easement is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township and, oh, township solicitor a description of the easement that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership and recites the deed book, volume, and page reference. Fifteen, that the dedication of covenants, declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. Sixteen, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. Seventeen, plans are revised and deemed to be clean prior to them to be presented to the Board of Commissioners. Eighteen, that a complete plan design of the improvements portrayed on Plan Sheet RP1, future right of way improvements shall be reviewed and approved by the township prior to the commencement of the construction of the improvements proposed. Nineteen, that a complete design plan for the improvements portrayed on Plan Sheet RP1, future right of way improvements shall be reviewed and approved by the Lehigh County Conservation District prior to the commencement of the construction of the improvements proposed. Twenty, that the improvements proposed on Plan Sheet RP1, future right of way improvements shall be secured as part of the project in a manner acceptable to the township. Twenty-one, that the improvements proposed in Plan Sheet RP1, future right of way improvements shall be deferred until the completion of the proposed building and the stabilization of the site as determined by the Lehigh County Conservation District. Work on said improvements shall commence not more than 12 months after such determination by the LCCD or the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the building, whichever is first. And finally, 22, if deemed to be necessary, that the applicant shall be required to provide the township with an engineered record plan of Plan Sheet RP1, future right of way improvements, signed by the applicant and sealed by a registered professional engineer and/or professional land surveyor as applicable to be recorded with Lehigh County Recorder of Deeds Office prior to the release of performance guarantees.
Okay. Anything else? Turn it over to you, for the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Adam Smith from Barry Eisen Associates with Jim Carroll from Long's Water Technology. This is our third time here, and we were here last month, so I won't spend time with a presentation unless you'd like to hear one. I'll just say that we had a chance to review the conditions. We had a chance to review Mr. Talarida's letter, which was very clean, and we are happy to comply with the conditions. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the board?
Good. I think you're covered with the stormwater and the inlet and, and the engineer's letter. I'm, I'm, I'm good with the conditions.
All right.
I guess I would just confirm with the engineer that everything is adequate in their perspective.
No, I think we went through, we checked the, the calculations, as we said, I think we even spoke. At the time that those inlets, the deferral will be called in, we will look a little bit closer at that southern two inlets, make sure they're in the right location, but those full engineer plans or full design would be furnished and we would approve it. But at this time, all the calculations provided seem adequate. And I believe with the conditions as written, seems to cover the township that those, the deferral improvements will be built.
And you have, okay, good. And you have gone through this with the Lehigh County Conservation District?
We have, yes.
And they're, they're good with?
They are, yeah.
The phases, the way you have it.
Correct, yeah. I, I have it in writing from the Conservation District. I brought Tony into that conversation so that he was copied as well. And all of the deferred public improvements we put into escrow, just to give the township certainty that it'll be done.
Congratulations on getting that done with the roadwork outside the Neptis.
Yeah.
Running a pay ship over there.
Looks like finding a unicorn.
Well, and over the last year or two, they kind of changed their definition of common plan of development, so it's become a little bit easier for developers.
The Linux.
Right. Okay. Any other comments? Courtesy of the floor, do y'all have any comments, questions? Okay. And.
There are no comments in the chat.
All right, so we have gone through this. We'll ask for a motion to approve. No, no, we got to do the, the conditions, the waivers and deferrals first. And they are on.
Eighty-four.
Greg says. We'll go with page 72, Greg, please.
Yeah, 72 probably is a good, good starting.
Okay, so the first one is a section 312-12B15 waiver from providing existing contours for 400 feet surrounding the site. I hear, and, and Tony has no issues with, with that. Do you hear a motion? Motion by David, second by Al.
Diane Kelly. Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson. Mark Luth. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, the second request is a 312-12B21 waiver from showing all streets easements and rights of way within 400 feet of the site. Motion? David and Diane.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson. Mark Luth.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item C 312-35B3AIL, or one, I'm sorry. Deferral from construction curb along Hausman Road.
Now, the timing of that curb is tied into the, that long list of recommendations.
Yeah, condition of approval, yeah.
Correct. And page 84, it's also on the site being deemed stabilized by the LCCD.
Yeah, I would say defer to the extent of condition, no, whatever that condition is.
I think it's 21.
21.
21.
Which one?
I would make that motion deferred until, and comply with condition 21.
Okay. Diane made a motion.
I'll start again.
David, second.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Mark Luth. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, I'm going to go, this is number four now, but.
And that's a similar situation. It's deferred until the building is constructed and the site is deemed stabilized by the LCCD. Is there a coordinating condition number that we can attach to that?
I think it's same condition.
Same 21.
Okay, so, number four is a SALDO section 31235B3A21A waiver deferrals requested for the construction. It's a deferral now, requesting for the construction sidewalks along Hausman Road. And this will be deferred until the construction as an item 21.
I've moved.
Second.
Okay.
Yep, I'll give that to Diane. Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Mark Luth. Motion passes six to zero.
Number five now. SALDO section 31235B3CI. A deferral requested from widening the existing cartway to the cartway standards for the Collector Street until, hey, condition, that's still 21 also?
Still 21.
Still, condition 21 is completed.
I'm moved.
Second.
Diane and Al.
Yep. Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Mark Luth.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Number six is a, is a waiver, and do, and do we want to do that as a waiver or a deferral for the streetlights?
I was wondering if we should do a, a deferral, because at some point in the future, there could be other streetlights in the surrounding neighborhood, depending on future development. It would make sense that we've got the option to call it in. So I would move that they, we would defer that until such time as.
I'll start into deferral.
Do you have any issues with that?
That's fine with me. I assume this would not be associated with condition 21. Oh, Craig, this is.
Correct. This is.
Indefinite.
Sure.
There's nothing precluding you from doing it on your own.
I'll make that motion.
I'll start in the.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
And Mark Luth.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Number seven, say a waiver, and this is section 31235B3AII. A waiver is requested from constructing ramps in the public sidewalk.
That'd be a deferral.
Link to 21.
21.
Correct. Yeah, deferral linked to 21, please.
Deferral, okay.
I moved.
Second.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
And Mark Luth.
Aye.
A motion passes six to zero.
I think number eight now is, this is for the requirement of constructing concrete driveway apron. They're saying that's not going to be done, right? With the plan.
We're deferring to the engineer, so look at us.
Sure. The requirement is, the concrete apron is much like you would have on a residential driveway, so you have a a concrete apron that slopes up to where the sidewalk location would be. In instances like this, especially with a wider driveway apron, not necessarily common. You see a lot of businesses that have just the driveway. They will have the curb, the curb ramps and the sidewalk going across this driveway at some point, but they don't have that standard cross-section that you see in residential developments.
The warehouses on Cracker Sport and Eck have concrete aprons, they're just regular driveways.
That, that's more common, especially in a wider driveway situation or a business.
Correct.
Okay, so this would be a waiver. That's correct. They would not go in and put this in later. This would just be their driveway. Okay.
Make that motion.
Second.
Diane and Brian.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Mark Luth.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And then number nine is regarding street trees. Is that a waiver?
Deferral to the extent of condition 21.
Till 21, okay.
Yep.
There's a waiver is requested from the requirements of, I'm sorry, that deferral is requested from the requirements of installing street trees until condition 21 is met.
So moved.
Alan.
Yeah, Brian and Al.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair. Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Mark Luth. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. And then the last thing is a motion to.
Approve. I'll move, make that motion.
Motion to approve the project.
Subject to the conditions from the Community Development Department.
22 conditions.
Yes.
Second.
Diane and Brian.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Mark Luth. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. We appreciate you working with us on this project.
Okay, good luck in.
Thank you for making the township a great place. Thank you. Good luck with it.
Okay. All right. We are now going to go to transportation infrastructure update.
Yes, thank you. So, the draft tip came out today. We have four projects within the township that will be included. The Tillman Street Interchange, which has a bid date of 2022, looking for completion 2025. That's a huge project, rebuilding the entire interchange. So, a benefit to the township, its residents, getting rid of the crossover if you're coming off of 309, you don't have to do that crossover to get over to go south on Citronia. So it's definitely a benefit to the township.
They're going to fix that?
Yes, yes. It'll be, it's a different configuration. You don't have the crossover, it'd be stoplights at each of the off-ramps. So you come down to the stoplight and then you'll be able to, you'll have to cross lanes, but you won't have to fight the traffic that's constantly on Tillman Street.
Because that's one of the most exciting turns to make in the township, I think, when you.
Exciting is definitely one way to put it.
It's the number one safety issue in the Lehigh Valley.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
So you'll, when you're going south on 309, right by the Tribbit, there'll be a traffic light there.
Okay.
All right. Mon Chung Signal Upgrade, which is on Shursville Road and Gerard at the bottom of the hill. It's a signal upgrade. I doubt they're going to do anything. There's not a lot of room there, but it's a signal upgrade to hopefully get traffic through there better.
Is that for the, there's two signals there?
They're going to do both of those. They're going to coordinate them. My guess is they're going to coordinate timing and try and be able to use those in, in a cycle so that cars can move, that you don't hit one stop at the other one.
Okay.
A third project is the 309 resurfacing project. Now, this is an interesting project that started as the Betterment Project. It looks like that they're trying to get some money for 2024, 2025. Don't have a lead date, but again, that project is north of 22, the whole way into North Whitehall.
All the way to north of 22?
North of 22, so the intersection of Ridgefield, the intersection of Walbert, and then work your way up into North Whitehall. So the plan that we saw, and this is about a year ago, I would say, because it was shelved for a little, it was shelved for a little bit, but the plan that we saw early on was mostly resurfacing, but there was some reconfiguration of lanes. So there is room, as you can tell, in some of those intersections to put a center turn lane, a center left turn lane. They're going to look to do that, assuming that they don't have to do much widening or much reconstruction of the entire. reconstruction of the entire intersection.
Because there's a couple of places where they said they could widen it a little bit. There would be maybe an official lane, but they would be you'd be able to get around some of those. I think there's one on 309, just, I guess it's south of, what's the road? South of Huckleberry. Snowdrift, yeah. Because that one gets caught.
I believe, I think we said in one of those meetings.
And then the other one is just before you get to a lawn kiln, heading, heading north.
Hoffman.
Hoffmanville, yeah. That one gets stuck too.
There's a few of those, and then once you get past the Orfield Middle School, it gets tighter in that area, but when they have some room in that section, kind of the Huckleberry section, they're gonna try and put some extra turn lanes. So I think that'll be a nice project. Hopefully it'll smooth out some of the bottlenecking and problems with getting caught behind the car sitting there waiting to turn left. I think that'll be a good project. And then the last is a bridge, Huckleberry Road Bridge in Gooseville. There is a handful of bridges that are in a package. We don't have any design, but they're just, they list, laundry list of bridges that need to be redone in Arizona. So four projects could help out the township.
The bridge is in a the bridge is in a bundle. They try to identify a bunch of regional bridges that have the same characteristics in design, and then they fit them all to the same contractor for economies of scale.
So you do, it's, you don't design all five of them. You design one and kind of tie it in, if you will.
And so that is a bridge on, it's a bridge on Huckleberry near Gooseville.
Yeah, I believe, I think it's Orley Market. Right there, just to the west.
Oh, okay.
Where Blue Barn comes down, and where Blue Barn comes down.
Yeah, yeah.
You would go west.
Okay.
It's that bridge right there.
Okay.
It's a smaller bridge, but critical.
Okay. So that, that, the 309 Betterment, the Tillman Street Interchange, what's the other one? Oh, Mon Chung, okay.
Oh, four projects. I think that's a, that's a great thing for us to get, get those projects, so fingers crossed everything works out.
You think some of this new infrastructure money might help?
Yes, that is a big part of it.
It's not the cash cow we were hoping for, but it's about 11 to 13 million actually.
Okay. I could use that. All right. Good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Now we go to, the next thing is agenda item six, the comprehensive plan update.
Sorry, okay. Bear with me, I've received these plans just minutes before the meeting, so. They've been working diligently from his basement. So we're keeping in touch, and he has been working on what we're going to be doing for our first meeting. So basically, we are looking at if he can, yeah. He's typing furiously, that's another matter.
Can you hear me?
Ooh.
Let's try that.
Did you hear me?
Let's, let's protect our technology.
Okay, worth a try.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
So what I've been working on is the kind of the outline for how we will handle all of the workshops. And kind of getting a common idea of what the outcomes are gonna be and what, what we're looking to accomplish at each of those meetings. Greg and I haven't really had a chance to discuss what I sent him this afternoon. But the idea is we have all of the information that we received from the public engagement. So we have the guiding principles, the where should we grow, the how should we grow, and then all the recommendations from the working groups. And all of that information will be used to inform the compilation of the comp plan. So we have to take all of that information and put it together. And the way we'll put it together is in a outline, so I'm calling it a working outline. So we'll have the subject areas, and as a group, we'll go through and identify topics or bullet points that we want to see in the, those sections. And then that'll give us enough information to begin to write and/or compile infographics, tables and charts that are applicable. So that's kind of the, the rough idea of how it's gonna roll out. I think some of the, Greg and I, you know, we, we have to sit down and kind of talk about it. But we should be able to cover a few of the upfront items. Probably within one meeting. Some of the other items, like the goals and objectives, will have a pretty rough picture as we start, but as we go through, we'll be able to get those into better focus, so that by the time we're done with the whole process, we have a good understanding of we want, what we want to see for goals and objectives. The other piece is implementation. One of the things that we heard loud and clear through the public engagement process is we want an implementable plan. So every section, we will identify implementable actions. And we'll compile those in, within each section, and then we'll have a summary kind of summary matrix, and that kind of lists all of the implementable actions. And I started kind of compiling a list of some of the things that came up. And, you know, we'll go over those as they come up in, in the workshops. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any questions?
Our first meeting is January 11th.
January 11th, correct.
11th, yes.
Dave and I have talked, we would like to get you a packet that Friday. So you would have the weekend plus Monday and Tuesday to review what we put out. So, and if that works, that will be the standard then. You will get your packet the Friday before, and you'll have the weekend to review. At this point, the meeting is here, yes.
Object to change. Yeah, and if you want to look at before the, the last year or last comprehensive plan, the 2009 plan is on the, on the, in the township website, and then there's, the Michael Baker stuff is at with the SWT Comp Plan dot org. And so all that information is there, and are we starting with one area?
Yes, at least that was our intent. Dave, is that still our intent to start with?
I, I think we will start with the, you know, kind of the upfront piece of it. So there's introduction, kind of a brief talk of goals and objectives. Demographic profile, things like that, that have been done as part of the existing conditions report. So we'll hopefully breeze through those, and then we can, I think, starting with the resource protection piece is the next logical step. So I'm hopeful that we will get to natural, or resource protection. And, you know, there's three components to that, and we'll kind of address it as, as we go through it. But we'll get, you know, as soon as we have a better direction, we'll share it with, with the board as to what we're looking to focus on at each meeting.
Okay.
I have a question, Dave. You just reminded me, you spoke about existing conditions. I remember when, I believe it was when Todd Poole was here, there was some discussion over whether approved developments were factored in. Do you recall that? And you were going to check on that and make sure that we did have that data included. So we had an accurate picture of what we're expecting to be built out.
We did get an answer on that, the, and it was kind of a miscommunication there. There were certain projects that were in the pipeline that we had assumed he was gonna include in the economic model that were not included in the economic model. Since that time, he has refined his model, and it is now he calls it an app where you can add numbers and unit counts and things like that on the fly. And get some information real time. So that's something that we have not had a chance to explore. But the idea was to get our hands on that and test drive it and put in the Ridge Farm development and go through and figure out which developments weren't put in there and plug those in.
So is your plan to do that prior to the first workshop, so that the data that we're going to begin to talk about is actually including all of that?
I was not. The existing conditions report is more of the demographic profile. The economic model is more of the projections. So when we get to the part where we talk about some of the projections outside of, you know, straight population projections and employment projections from the LVPC, we will certainly bring that, the economic model into it. And we're just kind of trying to figure out where to bring it in.
And my second question is, do we have a mechanism to email people who attended the comp plan workshops to this point to alert them that these are starting back up again, so that we can invite them to participate?
Yes, we have quite, quite a robust email list now. So everybody that participated in the workshops, or the working groups, everybody that signed up for the working groups, as well as we have an email from everybody that responded to the How Should We Grow survey. So we have I think, over 300 people, 300 emails that are interested in, in the comp plan. So we will absolutely send that out, a little press release kind of thing, that discusses the workshops. And then, you know, website and blog, and if we can get it over to the Facebook on the Parks and Rec and Police, and, you know, throw it out through social media, for sure.
Very good, and I'm assuming we will also hold the workshops virtually, so people can attend?
We will have the virtual component, and, you know, this is kind of our first real test of how it's working with engagement from the from the internet. So it, it seems to be working. It may be a little unnerving hearing a voice from the sky for your, everybody there, but it seems to be working okay, and we'll, we'll continue to refine it and test it. So that when we do the workshops, I think that's a great platform to iron out some of these kinks that we might run into with the virtual component.
I agree. Thank you very much, David.
You're welcome. I did experience the, the end that David is on last night. It worked very well. We, we all have to make sure that we're talking into the microphone and that the microphone is on. That was the most difficult part, because a few people didn't last night, but the speaker, the podium works well, and as long as David can talk, we can have other groups, other people talking.
Yeah, I agree. As long as everybody's on mic, it works really well.
Yeah.
But if you're discussing something off mic, it's
Right.
It's kind of like, everybody's staring at somebody and there's no response.
Okay, and so the, I guess the public notice will be going out later this week, or?
Yes. Yeah, I think Tracy's off, but she's back on Monday. The, the deadline to get it into the East Penn Press is Monday at noon. So we'll tee that up, and all she has to do is hit
Okay, and then like the, the email and all that, when, would that be like the first week in January?
Well, I, I would suggest sending out sometime between now and the end of the year as a first, you know, a first reminder, save the date sort of thing, and then perhaps a second email blast a week beforehand.
Okay, to try to do something before the end of the year, is it just a brief?
Yeah, just, just something, save the date. You know, people are very busy at this point in time, and it might be, you gotta remind them a few times.
Right, right.
So might it make sense to put that email out, the first one, the last week of December, as opposed to right before Christmas, where people are busy?
If it were, if I were here and not on vacation, I'd do it every week.
Thanks, Greg.
I have an intern coming in, so maybe this is something for Robert to do.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on the comprehensive plan? Okay, we'll move on then to the election of officers, I guess. Turn that over to you, Joe. Is that how that works?
Yes, sir.
Before we get started, can I ask a question? I was at the Public Safety meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they had a nominating committee of members that I guess talked about who wanted, who they wanted to nominate. I know I haven't spoken to anyone on this board about this process at all. I really don't even understand where the rules are for it. I'm just questioning how we make this decision as a board.
Just following what we've done for years, I guess.
It's, I think it's a kind of basic, you open the floor to nominations. You accept the nominations. If, if there are no more, we then close the floor to nominations. We hold the vote for each office successively. So basically, it's, we take them, if, if we have multiple people being nominated, then, well, so, so be it, and then we vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll proceed then. I will start out with the nomination for chair.
I nominate Bill McNair.
I'd like to nominate David Wilson.
We have two suggested nominations. Would anyone like to make a motion for either?
I'm not rocking the vote. I'll nominate Bill.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Vote for a vote.
All right, still keeping track.
I'll just go down the line here, and Mr. Luth.
Oh.
Wilson. Mr. Tobe.
Bill McNair. Vote for Bill. Height.
Bill McNair.
Kelly.
I vote for David.
Do you votes for Mr. McNair? Have it. I will now open the floor for nominations, the Office of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Brian Height.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Mr. Tobe, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second? Second. Take a vote, Mr. Luth. Tell you what, we only have one nomination.
Show of hands.
Show of hands.
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. The final office for appointment this evening is the Office of Secretary. Do I have any nominations for the Office of Secretary?
Nominate Alan Tobe.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Courtesy of the floor, Monica? Nothing? Okay.
I have a few things.
Okay, for the next meeting and a few other things, okay?
Yeah. Next meeting, we have Ru subdivision is back for their eighth go around in wow, nine years. We hope that this is their final one. We also have Ridge Farm Phase 1A Final Plan back for their second go around. And we do have substantially more material from them this time. And third, but not least, 1810 PA Route 309, the Wawa is back. They are coming in with the exactly same materials that they submitted last time. But by this meeting, they will have the PennDOT scoping meeting under their belt. So we should know a lot more about where those driveways should go. So those are the three plans that are coming up for the January 20th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Are they confident they're going to have info, feedback from PennDOT in that short?
They're confident. I'm, I don't know what the basis to their confidence is, but they're confident.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, the other thing I have, unless you have something you want to move forward with. All right, one of the things we've been discussing amongst staff is something we'd like to implement in the future. We, we're calling it now the completeness review process. Right now, we have a deadline for submission for a planning commission meeting that is one month prior. And basically today was the deadline, 4:00 PM. So people bring in their projects and as long as they have a check, basically they, they are in. At that point, the plans go to Pidcock, especially new plans, they go in for what is called a submission receipt review just to make sure that what they're submitting is, at least meets the bare minimum standards for a review. Now, obviously there's issues with this, both practically speaking, legally speaking, and financially speaking. So what we'd like to do to kind of fix some of these things, and as I understand it, this is perfectly legal through the state MPC, is we can set an application filing deadline. And what we'd like to do is do this a few weeks before what would be, you know, our standard deadline. And at that point, we would take plans in and review them versus SALDO, what the absolute requirements are. Issue a review letter based on the submission and based on SALDO, list all the deficiencies of that submission. Send that to the applicant, hopefully in only a few days, no more than a week, and give them another week to complete the submission. Either get all the materials in or a request for a waiver for those materials. Once we get that all in, or as much of it as we can, we take a look again at what they've submitted and basically bring that list into you at the upcoming Planning Commission meeting. At that point, you review that list with our commentary and you decide if they meet the requirements for a complete submission. So if they have everything we said, they, you know, for example, if the township and engineer issue, issues a clean letter on their submission, that would indicate that they have submitted everything per SALDO. Then you would basically vote to accept that submission and begin the review process. And then you would see that plan the following month. If not, you'd have to make the call. Is their waiver request sufficient to address what they haven't submitted? So at that point, we should have our waiver request letters be complete and we should have everything in that SALDO stipulates they bring in. Unless you decide that the waiver request means they don't have to submit something. So at that point, that meeting, we have a formal declaration from you guys, some sort of motion or something like that to accept the, accept the submission. And at that point, it moves forward and we start the clock on the MPC timeframe.
And it would come up at the next meeting then is when?
Yes.
We, we would have like this, this meeting.
Yes.
So the folks that were here tonight would have had a pre-submission kind of a month ago.
Yes. Yeah, probably to, to, well, we're, we're hoping for two weeks prior. So they would have had a filing deadline of two weeks ago. They would have brought in a submission. We would have reviewed it, given the opportunity to supplement, supplement it as necessary. Reviewed it again when we had gotten all the stuff and then given you a formal recommendation as to whether it was compliant or not. And you would take it from there.
So that's sort of like an administrative completeness review to make sure
Correct.
they've submitted all the necessary documents opposed to a technical.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the technical review would then follow.
First submission of a plan. You're doing this for every submission? Re-submission of a
The intent is at least for the initial submission. And to go one further, oftentimes for re-submissions, Long's Water was the, the most recent thing, where they came in one month, had only a few issues they needed resolved. So what we would like to do is allow them at that meeting file an expedited re-submission. That would give them a few extra days to resubmit materials. So they would have maybe until the following Monday to resubmit. They, that would formalize that procedure instead of what we have now is, well, we could accept it if both the township engineer and, and I agree to it. So we want to do stuff like that on re-submissions. A lot of people don't. They want to take the full month before they resubmit. That's fine. But there are a few, yeah, a few plans that have minimal things that need to be tweaked and they can do so over the weekend. So we want to give them that opportunity as well, much, much like we did with Long's Water. So.
Greg, the only thing I'll mention, and I can look into it if need be. I'm not so sure that the time clock doesn't start with the initial submission for the completeness review. I don't think you can exclude that from the 90 day time clock.
Right, no. If I understand the time clock, it works with, the time starts on the first meeting after the initial submission. So I've always been working it. If the submission comes in at 4:00 PM, this meeting starts the time clock. If the submission comes in tomorrow morning, the next meeting starts the time clock. So basically, we're not out anything by accepting, you know, a filing two weeks from now because it's this meeting that starts the time clock on that. Now, if for example, we determine it's an incomplete submission, then I would say that we, we record that and say, no, this is not a complete submission. We are not accepting this. Come back with a complete submission. I believe at that point, it wouldn't start the time clock since they haven't had a complete submission.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So I think that's, I, I think we're fine. I think we're not losing anything by doing this. And I think we're gaining a lot by doing it.
Absolutely.
We do. But the problem is that oftentimes we don't get the full checklist and we kind of, we can make a review with what's been submitted, but we prefer that. And sometimes we have difficulty making a full review with what's been submitted. We've already accepted it. So legally, the time clock has started. So we want to codify, you know, so that when they come to this meeting, they know that the clock has started and you know that the clock has started and we know we've gotten a complete submission in order to review it properly.
I, I think it's a good idea to have that checklist and then hold them accountable to comply with that checklist. I, I know we've had a lot of situations where people submit stuff last minute and we're getting it.
Exactly.
And, and we've gotten waiver requests
Minutes right there.
Literally at the meeting.
Exactly. And, and
It's even incomplete because it doesn't even have a justification.
Exactly.
This would eliminate a lot of those issues. My question is, is how many, the ballpark, how many of developers or plans that come in actually have like sit down with staff rather than just submitting something? You know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, 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 yeah. A quarter to a third? We're trying to encourage that sort of thing.
And this might be a catalyst to that.
It might, yes. Yeah.
Is there a, a mechanism to, I know when we've had a few of these issues where someone has submitted, an applicant submitted their plan to LVPC and there's an error in the check or whatever, so it doesn't go through, bounces around and it doesn't end up getting back to us in time. Is there a way to get a confirmation from LVPC that it's accepted on their end as well? So we're aware the applicant has followed through on their obligation to get that in for review? My question makes sense?
Kind of. The, the problem is that LVPC, like PennDOT, like anything else, is an outside agency. We can't hold up an approval based on an outside agency. If they, if they choose to run through the entire process up to Board of Commissioner approval and not submit to LVPC, they can run that risk because if LVPC says this doesn't work, then they have to revise the plan and come back to us. So I, I don't think we have any legal hat to hang up, you know, anywhere legally to hang our hat on to, you know, get what you're asking for.
Timeframes aren't the same. Not really required to submit the same day to LVPC, the same day I submit to South White. So, Mike Brander. And the, and LCCD. Want to see it till you have preliminary.
Right.
And that's sort of a
And at the end of the day, they can't build nothing until LVPC signs off on it anyway.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and that's the thing.
They could go through our whole approval process, then go to them and then
Yeah, and it falls apart, yes, yeah. Yeah, and oftentimes that's what you see is, is our approval is conditioned upon them getting the LCCD approval, the PennDOT HOP, all of that stuff. So as long as they achieve it, it doesn't matter if they achieve it before they even bring in a plan to us or if it's a year after we approve the plan. So. Yeah.
Have we thought about requiring sketch plans for certain projects or?
We have and we do. For example, TNDs require a sketch plan. If you're looking at residential development over 50 units, a sketch plan has to be brought before the Board of Commissioners to approve whether a land, the, the land is being dedicated or a fee is being dedicated, something along those lines. So we do have certain requirements for sketch plans. Now, the problem is that those requirements then actually start the clock. They do give some sort of legal standing to the, the applicant. And the MPC basically says, if you require a sketch plan, that's when the clock starts. Am I correct on that, Joe?
That's absolutely correct.
Yep.
But that's where we run into seeing sketch plans during courtesy of the floor. They're not actually going through the process that South White Hall outlines for submission of a sketch plan.
Well, actually, the courtesy of the floor is simply to show us. That's all it is. We're not reviewing it. We're just looking at it for the first time. You know, 1810 PA Route 309 brought in the sketch showing the new layout with just the Wawa. They got no review from us. That was simply them coming in, showing it to us. We have nothing on paper, no formal reviews and that. We didn't look at it. I didn't look at it. It was just more or less a presentation. Hi, this is what we're planning to do. What do you think?
So Merely, I think a sketch plan is good for the township and it's good for the developer, but I'd be very hesitant to making it a requirement. Just a quick horror story that occurred in North Hampton County, which I'm very aware because I was partly involved in some ancillary litigation years ago. There was a sketch plan that was deemed approved because of the requirement. And of course, at that point in time, there's no security post, no anything. And lots ended up being sold out of it and the court required the township to be responsible for stormwater and other infrastructure installation, which can happen. And unfortunately, the plan had basically water flowing uphill. It was a nightmare. And it is still a development after 20 plus years. It has problems as of what happened. So I, I think it's probably a bad idea to require sketch.
Yeah, so, so in essence, yeah, I, I would not require them unless there's a very specific reason to do so. The sketch plan that you saw with 1810, that was simply a courtesy of the floor action. We have had just sketch plans, developer can submit on their own. We can review it. I mean, they, they submit an application. We do have a checklist of items that they need to do for such plan submission. But quite frankly, I think, Tony, as you said, it, it's not much more than a napkin sketch. Because that's all we're looking at. But, but even that does not grant them any standing. And it doesn't start the clock. It is simply a, a curt, almost a courtesy staff review to give them some, you know, direction while they formulate the preliminary plan.
Are you going to be writing this up or what you're?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be kicking this around some more, making sure it works. One of the reasons why we do this is because when they bring in at least initial submission, you're looking at an application fee and an escrow. And oftentimes, if they don't get the fees right, then we have to go chase them down and, you know, changing checks. It's, it's just a pain. So we're trying to get it so that the application fee is a simple $50 filing fee. They bring it in, give it to the cashier. They give us the thing. We generate an invoice for the correct fee and the correct, you know, escrow. And then they mail it directly to our finance department. So money isn't going through the community development department. You know, it's going through the cashiering system as it should be. You know, that's the financial aspect. It's, then we get the complete checklist, everything we should be getting. We hopefully stop any more of these last second submission things and everything just works better. So that's the point. We're, we're going to be taking the next few months to look at this, iron out some details. I probably, we probably won't start this until maybe like the beginning of 2023. We want to give a lot of people a long heads up that this is coming because we've had our deadline date now in the same spot for decades. And simply changing it to two weeks before will put a lot of people, if they're not aware that this is coming, we're going to get a lot of submissions on the day of and we're going to say, no, we, you know, we have to turn this away because you haven't met the filing deadline. So we want to make sure this is well-publicized beforehand. So this, this is not something we're going to do immediately, but it's something we're looking at implementing sometime in the near to midterm future.
And how do you intend to advertise or let the developers know that we're making this change?
Basically, we know pretty much most, if not all, of the engineering firms in the Lehigh Valley. We also know most, if not all, of the law offices in the Lehigh Valley. And since almost everybody has to go through one of them to submit, we plan to put it out there. I think once we make this, we will announce it at every Planning Commission meeting that this is coming. So at least the people who are here or maybe watching on the web, you know, start picking up word of that. And certainly, you know, Um, you know, start picking up word of that, and certainly, you know, at least the website, uh. Um, that's one of the things we're kicking around as to.
I didn't hear the question mark.
We had to put it as part of SALDO, I mean, as a.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And certainly, you can expect flack from the development community.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's the first place you look when you're.
Yeah.
Recommend putting it on the website too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, this is one of those things, we don't want to, you know, start overnight and. Have people just angry at us for the next year and a half, so. So this is something we're working on.
Okay, so we're going to do it, this is the good time to start. We place an operation. Or he gets to the point of the rezoning following the conflict.
I think it's important to keep it to initial submission. It's so hard to meet the deadline. Two meetings as it is now, and take away two weeks. Everything is kind of done up to. Icing a plan. Run it down here. You almost need every hour you can. Sometimes it takes half the data. Didn't have to wait for final plan to find the title search. Those needs make running right through the property that no one ever picked up.
So in your, in your experience, that would have been helpful, having that kind of filing at the initial.
Yeah, I mean.
Get feedback from the municipality.
I want to read. Title report. Apartment or, you know, a wetland delineation when it's, when it's a parking lot, like a restaurant, where you know there's not a wetline involved. Go out and hire a wetline specialist. Have someone on staff. Spend time on something that's unnecessary. I think there's gonna be a lot of things you'll find a waiver for. But if, you know, in your, in your. In your list. Have everything justified, yeah.
I think a similar situation is the the Conservation District. You submit, you have to go through an admin completeness review to make sure you submitted everything. If you didn't submit everything. Give you a letter and say you forgot to include this, this, and that. I I think that's a good procedure. Borrow that, and you just have it in the beginning because.
Although that's, that's a little misguided, because administrative completeness is actually like a technical review. They just call it administratively complete, and someone says.
They they sometimes sprinkle in technical.
Yeah, yeah. You can get past administrative. Golden right into technical. But I I I, the concept, I get it. Certain little things that makes it.
Good. All right, anything else, Greg?
Oh, I have it this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second. Favor.
Aye.
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 Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Christmas. Holiday, I guess.
And happy holiday.
Monica.